Yeah, right. Six o'clock will call the meeting today. First order of business is pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. Intuit Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So you want to make some in some.
Um, we will, we will be approved in minutes of October eighteenth. Motion. Motion and a day and a second. Any further describing or? In the name of our favor. Is everybody? Um, members reports will start in a minute.
Um, the only question that I've gotten from anybody is all of the construction, like the traffic backup near the light, if there's like the the dates like that we have to tell them that it's going to be cleared up and better or no?
It's done.
It is done. Okay.
They were supposed to be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday with the weather on Friday. They pushed it into Monday.
Okay.
So it's the three.
Okay.
So now what we're going to do is I had to. If any of those.
I'm good this week.
Chelsea. And nothing for me. We'll move right into the town leaders award.
Uh, absentee ballots are only available until closing business tomorrow. That was special circumstance and they are due back to us by eight o'clock on election night. Town office will be closed on Tuesday for the election and then Friday for the holiday, which is Saturday observing Friday. Um, I have been able to certify just about every last um corrective action on the alleged labor violations uh that were submitted by the investigator from the Department of Labor. Uh, the rest of them should be done on Friday when the Department of Labor comes in to do the annual training that I asked to do last year that was not complete. So uh anyway, I did submit my request for penalty discussion to appeal the amounts assessed for certain violations. Uh, and I expect to hear back on that in the next week or two, but um by closing business on Friday, well, then everything will shore it up. Um, and the cost of all of that less time of our employees was twenty five dollars. So um, that's how we're in a very good position in our high risk departments. It was largely um paperwork and or training and unfortunately I relied on fortunately, unfortunately, it's a phenomenal resource to rely on the Department of Labor to come in with safety works program. When you ask them to do your annual training, you hope that it's done and it didn't get done. And so the other division of Department of Labor wrote a soft form. So um anyway, is what it is. That wasn't everything, but um neither hand of their were in a very good position. Uh, Savage has remained to stay on in an interim capacity as a licensed plumbing inspector. That's something that not does anybody can do. And at this time of the year, it's not terrible. So um, he's going to do that and I'm gonna I'll handle permits for the time being until we can try to get them in onboard. Uh, it's a terrible environment trying to get somebody in this position. So um it may be that I end up going up to meet the superintendent of schools and trying to check if somebody coming out of school is going to community college and we broke personal agreement with them on a contractual basis to see if we can do that. But that's how we're looking in terms of trying to get that together. But just thankful is this time of the year. Uh, new E nine one one addressing platform rolled out this last week. It's a whole different program. Um, which as soon as it was over, you immediately started using that. So that was quite the experience. Uh, planning board meeting this month canceled, no business, but in December they will meet if nothing else to discuss the budget. Uh, economic development. I did have my initial meeting with the management. It was Sula. They were very interested in discussing parking ride opportunities, whether it was just the fact that we advertise for them or some shared maintenance or whatnot. So I need to connect a few more dots with the state, with us, with possibly TIF. Not sure. I need to exhaust all of that to get back to them. Um, but it was, I was surprised how well received it was. So um, I said that the board was very well worked and I think it was mutually beneficial to us. So uh, pre bid meeting was held Monday morning in the, in the cold rain with three contractors to discuss the rail ma- uh, the trail maintenance building in Ashland Park. Uh, I've set a deadline of the end of next week, which is November ninth, actually with a holiday, but um, if they show up on the tenth, that's going to be fine too. So hopefully next regular meeting, we'll be able to take a look at their proposals. Uh, I think that was a pretty productive time for us to be there with them. Uh, and not everybody to ask questions and things that they thought of that another contract going to think of that we didn't think of. Um, it went, uh, it went very well. I think that was with me there. It was both helpful. So.
Thank you for facilitating that. Like I'm glad that we're going down route. I think that is. That's great.
So kind of related to that, I emailed probably a half a dozen uh contractors. There were ones that were there that day as well as other ones that I found. Um, to look at replacing the foot box at the Sula park. They're going to be covered under insurance. If there's a gap under our insurance, it'll be covered by FEMA. And so I have the specs that the state buildings offer them. And so I issued those specs and asked for uh proposals back later than November thirtieth, so that we can give them go ahead hopefully the first of December. It's a great winter project for somebody um to fill in time because I'm not looking for delivery until May first. So um anyway, all of that stuff is posted on our RFP section of the website. It's linked on the homepage. There's our request for proposals. So um, that's how we've kind of run with that. The TIP committee will meet on November twenty seventh at five o'clock. As long as I can have a forum, they'll have continued business. Um at least continued business from the last meeting, talking about kayak storage racks, automated uh storage racks with the app based. It's really kind of cool. I had a meeting on that today, but solar powered cellular activated storage cages and it allows, uh, we have to pay on our front lease and they would then share it to some of the runners that we determine what runner it's going to be. So um, a neat opportunity there, not free, but um an opportunity there. Uh, the PTG truck retreat got moved to Saturday. The Chonki program, which was sponsored by the library, was hugely successful, well attended, helped out by the weather. The trustees will meet early this month uh ahead of things moving. Uh, the meetings of FEMA have continued. Uh, we were able to cancel a psych visit, but it stayed for yesterday uh because I was able to get them an overload of information on what we had. So um, that was helpful. And so I had a call with them next Friday. We're hopefully getting to the end of this. Hometown FET, it's been four years, I think, since we've had a rabies clinic here in town. Uh, they've agreed to come in for two hours on Saturday, the eighteenth, we're going to do it at the fire station. So it's close to the town. It moved away up to the airport. It's, you've also got the craft fairs and things happening that day. So it's a no excuse opportunity for uh folks to be able to get in and get their animals vaccinated. The intersection work that's completed. You've got two more phases. They'll come this winter and then one in the spring and then actually the end of that project. And then we'll be faced with the side lot rehab project phase one, as well as the uh near one paid of the remainder of Route Two down the street. That's a next summer project as well. Back to ball settings now open online. We have manual registrations here. A couple of things that I missed on your paperwork. Uh, Rodney was able to negotiate all public works. Uh, he's acting forming really as of today. Um, a Martin Street Road turnaround at the town line. So that's a huge win to formalize something deeded on paper. Uh, that will benefit both us and the town itself. So took the lead on that. Guys of forty by forty Eastman. Uh, save us time and make sure that what we have for investments in those tournaments aren't, don't get blocked off two weeks later. And the sewer commission is going to meet on the twenty first at four thirty. Um, that is it'll be a final quarter discussion, but pretty much it was a resident request taking issue with the discontinuation of upside meter rates. So it'll be an interesting conversation later to see um how that looks.
Yeah, my God. Thank you. Well, moving forward, uh, discussion action on November first, general warrant number twenty three.
Twenty. I move that we approve general warrant number twenty and the amount of one hundred seventy thousand, one hundred thirty six dollars and thirty six cents.
Second, she ordered in the second.
Um, it's the burger protected clothing is up this month. Fire department.
Yes, and there'll be another nice chunk that we'll have to pay in a future warrant.
Okay.
Should total up to be like two hundred five thousand.
Anything else? What we're there? That's everybody. Uh, public comments.
Fire away, Skip. The uh I last couple of meetings I've zoned in in the uh the microphone to hear you guys talk is not positioned very well at all. The it uh half the conversation gets missed, but yeah. So I just want to bring that to your attention. If there's a better way to mic the meeting, if somebody's old and wants to zoom in on it. Cause I, I think you are getting quite a few people zooming. Yeah, and I've been trying it myself, but uh you're missing half of the meeting just because you can't understand. The only other thing I want to bring up, uh, give me after speed on the uh Walker road because I zoomed in and I missed half of what you guys said.
All of Richard, take that. Are you zooming or streaming on Facebook?
Streaming on.
And if you're watching us live on Facebook, you're going to catch that delay. But this microphone, if not proposed, sitting over in those chairs is a vast improvement. When we have a committee and we don't have audience.
Right.
We're allowed to clear. That's why we ask you to keep the ruffles down and all your conversation. Cause when Mr. Overtear. It's amplified. Yeah, I get it. Text us. Uh, but anyway, we'll maybe pull that up here and then ask you folks to speak up from audience in the public comment. Walker road longitudinal cracking. We had Mike come out. They took a look at it. They took samples of the materials that they put down. There are a bunch of different circumstances, uh, conditions, whatever you want to call it, that um kind of don't give us the exact reason for why it's happened. So what they have done is they've offered to commit in crack seal and no cost to us this fall. And they will come back in the spring and crack seal again. And then we'll, we'll evaluate at that point in time where we are. They had recommended that we overlay that road when they're done.
Right.
To the sixty six thousand.
Right.
Uh, so that will be done after we crack seal twice. Do you want to commit to that today? No, you don't want to. They said they will be willing to hold that contract price so we can see how that played out. Um, comes from.
Yeah, I will. Yeah, it sounds pretty good. I mean, cause in the spring, after you crack seal it this fall, you're going to see how much it's either going to be to the better one for us.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm pleased that they honored the pricing, that they were both at pricing. Yes, as well. So we didn't have to lock in right now.
I heard you guys talk on this.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. That's kind of where I'm at.
Not perfect, but they've been out working with us. They've been out four times and so you want to meet in the middle, I've got to end it.
No, no, I, I, I.
Um, right. Uh, number eight, discussion action on main uh public employee retirement system enrollment for full time firefighters.
Okay, uh, I'll start this off. Your interim fire chief is present tonight. Daisy's birthday.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Better. Yes, thank you. Sounds like a nice pattern.
I'll wait. So I'm taking a tumble.
I, I will introduce it and then a lot of time in folks can ask questions of whoever you would like. Back in March, uh, before that even, the fire officers came to us and we're talking about the importance of remaining competitive despite that we can, given our size, uh, in supporting retention. So one of those big components was to get our first responders being the whole time firefighters out of our traditional four fifty seven retirement accounts that all of the town police have right now and get them into, I'll say, the twenty five and up. You put in twenty five years of law enforcement or firefighting service and you are eligible to retire and receive two thirds of the regular pay. It sounds really nice and it is, but it's not more than what we can afford and it's what everybody else in the region is offering their full time equivalent staff. Um, so this went to town meeting at the pleasure of the last board. And allow the board then to negotiate A, the plan, when the plan was assigned in that warrant article, which is speckified for firefighters. And the second part of that is it'll allow you the ability to negotiate a buy in, a purchase of credit for years of service. So we have one employee that has approximately three years of service, one with approximately one. They run it through an actuarial and then they give you the cost of purchasing the credit and then you can decide to share in that purchase of credit uh at whatever rate you want or not. So the actuaries ran those numbers for us. The cost of buy in is over thirty thousand dollars. Um, so two parts tonight is the first is to discuss authorizing the town to enroll the firefighters in there. And then really the second part is, do you want to purchase the credit or do you want to offer an in lieu of, so it's a, or do you not want to do anything else? You just want to enroll into the ten first. You have anything else to add?
But it's not on the competitive nature of it. I mean, there, every full time department right now in the area is advertising every single one. Uh, you know, two, it's two of business counties, it's two of the care fields. Oakland, I think, just filled there over the name of Oracle as it was Augusta as well. It, it's a retention thing and we, we can't keep up with them in every way, but this seems like a small way that we can. Uh, and I think appropriate and it's not just retention of our people. But if you ever got somebody who later in their career, maybe had twenty or whatever years in, maybe didn't like the overnight shifts and wanted to transition into something a little bit more regular, normal, eight to five kind of stuff and to finish up their career in Norwood, they could do that. But right now they couldn't, right? So it's a, you know, to some degree, it's keeping up with the Joneses. It is what what's standard in the industry and, and I think appropriate for for the, for the job. And this would be instead of your existing government, roll one K, whatever that is.
Four fifty seven, brother. What is, two part, this is first, uh, motion to enter.
Right. Actually enroll.
And then the second is.
And what have they been enrolling? What do we actually go on the hook for as far as um they do the up to? I mean, that fixed amount per employee that's simply our share of that.
Seven main pairs.
Uh, you're saying just buying them out?
Uh, no, I'm saying so if we enroll right now and don't do anything behind role, what are we actually dollar wise on the hook for?
It's not dollars, it's percentage of their income. Right now we contribute up to six percent of their time, uh, of their salary and contribution to their four fifty seven. We bump up to ballpark ten percent. The employees are also required to bump up. It's a percent of half. I think they're up to seven and a half percent. Ballpark.
So we, so we both equally put into this, the town and the employee. It's not equal. We put in, we put in.
That's correct. Both parties would be entering, like it's investing in them and they're also having to invest themselves to be a part of it. Okay. Um, yeah, like for me, I I think that we should be joining into this. I, the retroactive, the, the buy in stuff. That's where I think that, you know, think the initial thing in lieu of like, maybe if we can do something else, because I do think that that thirty plus thousand dollars is a bigger price tag than what we're really.
And what, what exactly is that?
It's making it so they're part of this program. The entire time they've been with you. So like someone who's been here for three years, like they've always been in this program that we're going to go into now.
A year, right. Well, it adds up to thirty, right?
It does.
Well, right.
They take whatever it would have been for their contribution, ours and the interest it would have made. And then they come up with a number.
Yeah. And I don't think that we really have like necessarily the responsibility to do something that when they hired, like it wasn't part of it. You know, it's like, we want to do right by them and maybe we can do something, but I think that is taking it to like you know, that's a fairly hefty expense. Um, I say we go into it, but we figure something else versus paying that's um the prior service cost. I, I just don't think that is financially feasible.
So the truth that we have, do they do the four fifty seven now? Is it possible that the four to seven money can be rolled because it's going into another retirement account? Or not?
It could be, it could be. You could roll as a contribution to this. It just doesn't come to where I think it's going to be reasonable. Because candidly, they are uh and sometimes you don't always say that you're full potential.
I didn't. I didn't.
Correct.
That it was.
People don't.
I couldn't. Uh, and just to be clear, I'm, I'm not asking for the uh buy in about I think joining the program is appropriate. And if you'd like to put some small uh buy in amount towards it or not. Uh, that's, that's absolutely a second step and totally at your pleasure. I'm not asking for that, but I think it is appropriate that we join the program.
Yeah, I, I do too. I, I think it's um, it's a good faith gesture for us to do something financially to that. I think that the amount there is sort of out of reach for us financially at this time of the year, but like I do think we can do something, just not because we have been funding their retirement and, and it sends like, you know, for someone who's been here three years, I don't know, like three or four thousand dollars seems like reasonable twenty five. I have a little bit harder time.
But if you took the percentage difference for the three years and multiplied it out of their salary, if you have those numbers or we can come up with those numbers. Figure out what's that three, three percent for the one that's three point oh eight, that amount for that one goes into the account. The other one would be the one year at the percentage difference. So in the town, still putting in exactly what they would have from the beginning.
Yeah, I just, I mean, three years, twenty five thousand, that's like eight grand a year. Yeah. Now, what's this percentage to get that? I mean,
How many cases?
Percent on how much money?
Whatever. Whatever their salary. I can tell you mine is, I mean, I'm in the two thirds and between mine and the county's portion, it's almost twenty percent of my salary. Because you get to figure you're planning on a twenty five year.
We've been in a hospital.
Uh, I mean, you gotta, you gotta throw money. I mean, mine's almost ten percent that I have to go into my own money every, every day.
Oh, I think four one K. And I, so it's tough. Uh, I, I definitely support the program. Uh, uh, maybe I, I mean, because we're also, we're going to go get raises and all that coming up for these gentlemen. Uh, I think most people would rather stay, especially younger people, would rather see that money in uh rates versus us going into their retirement account. Uh, of course you can't really poll them on that or ask them, but for me, I, I think just starting in this program is enough without making a contribution for past time. Because like you said, they took these jobs without these benefits. And we've added these benefits on our own. I think Todd was kind of a big driver here, but it was uh they haven't got bored and uh, but Todd driven and not necessarily the the two gentlemen that we're discussing here, you know? So I, so I think they may go well just in us entering this program.
Right. And I think they'll have an opportunity to buy that back. At man pairs. Three main pairs. And, and usually after the fifteen year market, it's cheaper and they can do it on a.
Really? They're a little more slow and tolerable, I guess, you know what I mean? Uh.
You, you could take the opinion that you've had a done offering a program towards their retirement for the whole time they've been here, whether they take it or not is on them. This is now an enhanced, expanded, better opportunity. But you don't owe them anything.
Right. Can you roll the, the old stuff? That's what we did possibly, right? So they have those opportunities.
I mean, I, I agree. I think we're giving them an opportunity to move forward with the new one.
Um, skip.
Fire away. The gentleman that's been here three years, now he's probably got some money invested in his four one K. Has he been in it long enough to be vested so that he can get that money?
Everybody's. That question is inappropriate for a.
Okay.
Well, how long do you have to be with us? Or you don't ask this.
Day one, you're a hundred percent vested.
Okay.
As he answers.
Well, it's just. I guess you don't see something.
And, and not talking about any employees, but what Todd brought up earlier, I think it'll benefit us trying to get an employee in the future, coming our way.
Oh, a hundred percent.
Rather than because.
Yeah.
The employees that we have now, we, from my understanding is that they could go to Scout Egan anyway and take their system.
I said something with them.
Forever. So it's not going to retain our current employees, but it could get us future.
Most people don't think, they think retention. You're absolutely, you know, at the end of their career, they might be looking for the slower pace, Monday through Friday, you know, eight to five, they say, as long as I do that, but you know, I do the overnight. That doesn't fit our lifestyle or whatever.
I think it's a no brainer to stay competitive. We have to do the same thing that everybody around us is.
Need a motion to enter into the, what we call it, so.
Main pairs.
The PERS program for our current firefighters.
And not to purchase credit for time served.
And what?
Not to purchase credit for times.
Oh.
Right. More than a second. Uh, any of those back on this? Seeing none, all in favor. That's everybody.
All right. Discussion action on TIP and by committee recommendations.
Okay, there's no paper on here because we're going to make it pretty cut and dry. Uh, the TIP committee was asked uh to reconsider or consider additional funding for mural downtown. The murals in place, uh, very well received. Their placement of it was strategic to face towards Main Street, but it left the backside exposed, which this is the rail trail. Um, general consensus was that we probably should cover it up and the artist, I had quoted the price of up to two thousand five hundred dollars um to do that panel. So the TIP committee was a form just a form. Uh, they unanimously approved up to twenty five hundred dollars and the vice chair of the committee is here tonight. If he has anything else.
What is the comment? Seems like a lot, like for one panel facing the rail trail, could we have like signage? Come here to eat at a local eateries that costs us four hundred. You have a lot of money in that sign already.
Yes, like what will be on it?
If more of a welcome to Norwood, you know, feel, feel free to stop here kind of message. I don't, I don't want to get the exact word. Welcome to Norwood. You know, you drive through on the rail trail. What town is this? How would you even know? What town are you in? To get on logo.
That's cool.
Right.
But it's just the one panel for twenty five hundred bucks.
Well, the fourth one was ten.
Yeah, I can't like, we can have a welcome to Norwood walk. That's like as long as I am for less than twenty.
Friday's, I was like copying.
I.
Can I ask you a, just like a topic question? TIP funds, the facade program, can that be used on the, that side of downtown?
It can be now. Right.
Okay.
Because now you're on a public way.
Okay.
Cool. Good to know.
Uh, I want to focus a little bit more elaborate than just, you know what I mean? Welcome to Norwood walking line of memory.
You can see that from the trip. That's my thing.
Or you can't paint it is the other stuff is, it would be the same part. It's somewhat consistent, but it would not flow with the already existence, you know?
So it's a D and P.
Yeah, I understand it's going to be as it is today, like a view from the bridge up river towards Madison and it's going to have the mountains and a sunset. So you got that sunrise.
But like I've been on that and looking where the slide is like.
Sticky notes to letters. It's welcome to Norwood Walk and it goes around and there's something about the trails.
But it's only on one of the panels or the entire back panel?
Like it's that whole back panel. It's not going to interfere with the existing ones. It's just going to create something for you to look at and attract your attention from the rail.
I think it was the leftmost panel, as you're standing in the park, looking at the four pins. The back of the leftmost panel is directly facing the rail trail.
So is that the only one that's being painted or is it all four of them that's going to be painted with this?
This is an additional panel that's going to face.
But then what's going to be on the front of that panel?
Then it's going to create, it's going to be closed. So you've got the, you've got the song. It's on the train, you're like.
My feeling is when the whole sign first came to us, it was going to be grant money. And we're all like, yay, okay. And then all of a sudden we're at like eight, ten grand. And now I feel like it's become a super expensive sign and we just keep making it more expensive and doesn't even light up. Like, I don't know. Like I feel like twenty five hundred bucks could get us a lot more signage and information along that trail than, than a panel. Um, that would be my concern. Like, is that the best way to spend twenty five hundred dollars to let them know you're in Norwood Walk Stop here? So I don't know if like a beautiful hint, beautiful as it is, it's artwork. It's not necessarily what we're trying to do from the rail trail. Like welcome to Norwood Walk Stop here. I feel like there's better ways to do that and probably significantly cheaper.
Uh, I like it. I'm excited about it. And I think if the TIP committee unanimously thought like that was a good use of funds, then I would.
It wasn't the whole committee, was it? It was only enough for a forum, right?
Oh, that's all anymore. No, I, I get it. I mean, I'm, I like what the artists have done. I'm equally excited to see what they would do on the backside. Uh, are you right? If there are cheaper ways or possibly better ways to move up to Norwood? Certainly, uh, but I think this does play right into our I can't say theme, whatever we've got going or our ability to park downtown, right? Uh, if you've been on the trail, so coming and looking at the backside of the signs, this is very welcoming. Uh, it essentially is, and we can be the star of the trail. Uh,
You go see it coming from one way too.
You can always see it coming.
It's like a hundred bucks for like just from the Oakland way. Like, so for someone coming from Madison, are they going to notice that? Or are we going to do another? Yeah, I would be interested in spending the five grand on a sign. Like that feels a bit silly to me.
So there's already been discussion. We, it was a discussion committee. So there's already been discussion about trail finding and wayfinding signage that is, will come up on the trail that will be business sponsored and or town supported that with theme with our gateway signage. Your green wood tone signage that you see has been discussed about, you know, how do you enhance Norwood Walk along that section of ground? And you do that effectively. So we know what the components of that and the sports association is, is already cultivating the relationships with business owners that would be impact from the rails. So and they're having conversations with them about what would you be willing to pay if there was this or that. And they're having conversations with them about what would you be willing to pay if there was this or that, or what would they like to see?
Take away from the arts, cause I, I love the murals. Any way we could get like a, the school art program to come up with something to still put something back there, but it's a project for the school.
To do. Haven't thought of that.
From like the high school that it's. It's a project that the school was doing, that it's a welcome to Norwich Walk. And like I said, I don't wanna take away from the mural and if it was the theme was to keep it all with the same artists, I completely get it. Uh, but at the same time, would there be a possibility that maybe the high, Scotty and High School Art Program could develop something for that backside?
That has some appeal to it. One, it gives them a project, uh, to certainly make it cheaper for us, uh. Not that the cost is really a big driver, but for me. By making a project for the school serves, but I don't, I don't know if they do that, if they have that ability, uh. Sounds like it would be worth looking into.
I mean, I'm curious how, how much of that cost is. Cost of materials versus time?
Uh, the vast majority of it is gonna be in time.
Which I mean, I, I, I don't really like the price, I mean, for a hand painted mural of that size, I would expect a signage.
Signs up and down, then's all around.
Instead of being something to welcome to Norwich Walk, I don't think that is. Useful. I think it's dressing up the back of the sign, whatever, but it's not really the welcome to Norwich Walk, you can only see it from one way. It's not gonna be big enough and it's not gonna be positioned. To be the beacon of like turning here. So I feel like if we're just trying to make that mural bigger and. From every angle, she's pretty, but, but that's one thing, like, but it's not the welcome, because we're gonna need other stuff like that, though. So do we just wait and do all the things? I mean, do we need that? No, I don't think.
I mean, with that being said, is there room there? And unfortunately, I haven't gone out and actually got close to it to do a double to get on the backside, so it's seen from both sides.
It's almost like we should put another sign somewhere, like we could do something else.
It's slowing them close the back so that you can't see it. It's, right, it's not gonna be visible this morning. It's gonna be visible as you pass by and if you come down and into town, which ideally you're gonna have way.
Honestly, like, I've been through it on ATB. I'm not gonna look at that. Like, it's not, I mean, I might catch like some colors on my way by, but it's certainly not gonna make me stop there.
I don't wanna be rude, but there's a lot, if you've been up behind there, you know what it looks like. And so the benefit of something like this is that it's something that pulls your eye away from the things that you don't really want folks to see.
Well, that's the thing, like, can we take twenty-five hundred bucks and do some planting? So it doesn't, I mean, like, could we be doing? Instead of trying to trick an eye in one direction, could we be actually making it look better? Could the money be better spent to?
So the. The program has already cut their budget because they are working with the high school to come in and Dr. Dorni and they're gonna come in and they're gonna. Plant all these native plants in the spring. Moms are just place holders for the um. Fall reveal and Dr. Dorni is gonna be coming in to all of that landscaping, kids from the. Heart Culture Club.
Yeah, I mean, more like, you know, the, the areas you're looking, same to not necessarily grow the eye to. I mean. Is that then gonna become some sort of like, like barrier planting, like with our bodies or things like that? Things are gonna fill in and kind of screen. Is that what we would rather have? Because honestly, like screening all around and making the entire area a little nice, that might cost four thousand. I feel like that's a much better use of a few thousand bucks than panel. For me, but like, that's.
I'm a snowmobile, I have snowmobile all over the state thing. Normally, when you come into a town like this, I would think that the sportsman's club. Would want to have like a painted frame. On the back of that sign, so when people go in there and you got your downtown sponsors, you get the Six Penny John, you can get gas here. You, you got your trail map to show how to get into Irving, you get your trail map, how to get into Friends. Extended out into Madison, down into Fairfield, your map, so that people know.
Yeah, uh, so for the sportsman's club, uh, the sportsman's club does have uh plans for signs. Uh, if you've been down in there, there's a post currently right now in the middle of the ramp, uh, to get down in the park and ride that's where the sportsman's club. Plans and all their signs, uh, and the state for all the direct directional signs are on that post right there, up in the middle.
That's, you're talking now, uh.
Right in the parking lot, right in, so not the parking lot, the Ashley Wing Park right here. Uh, where we put in the access to get up on the trail. The state for the post in Port.
Yes, okay.
Uh, but that's where all the trail signage would be, uh, welcome to Norwich Walk, I mean, honestly, it's gonna be. You know, up on the, where it turns to the town of Norwich Walk on both sides, one side way down by Fairfield, the other one up by Madison. So this one isn't really informing you that you're. In Norwich Walk, I, I guess it's informing you that it's a relative place in Norwich Walk. You know, you wanna look here because this is where we're going to park if you're looking to get lunch or have drinks or whatever. Alright, so it isn't really just eye candy, uh, I like the planting ideas, which would be fantastic if it wasn't such a. Mutually owned and mutually accessible piece of property as to where the town doesn't exclusively own all of it. Uh, one half of it is York's, uh, the other half is the vacant building with right of ways and leaves us uh with. Inabilities to really do nice planting to make so you can't see the backside of some not so nice stuff. Whether it's our sign or vacant buildings, uh. So it's tough and I, I guess for me, I, I love the idea of the sign, the painted piece to it, but I actually. Think that Ron's idea is fantastic if the school, uh, cause I think something painted or done by the school, whether it's what, whatever. Uh, would be a little more relevant or nicer, uh, if you will, to know that it was made by students at the high school or junior high or whatever arts program. Woods program can do something like that, cause well, it provides them with a great.
Won't flow. That'd be my only concern with that, is that we did that, that it's not, there's not gonna be any conscious, so it's gonna be like something attached to it that's like a, an add-on. And it's like, well, the house was built nineteen twenty, but the addition was done in nineteen eighty and you can tell.
I don't know if that's, I'm just looking at alley, if they have the ability to do something that's painted or something offsuit that's different, but matches and goes with the flow.
I don't, I just, it didn't seem like, my, I never looked back at sun, been like, wow, missed opportunity.
Good with the science, science, the, the, the problem is that twenty-five hundred dollars for hand painted. Twenty-five hundred dollars can get you four great big signs that are double signed, you can put them all in place. That's the issue.
Ron asked me a question, I'll repeat it. Um, he said, did we have similar conversation that day for me? No, uh, we did, uh, but I'll tell, I'll tell you why largely, so the TIF committee is in favor and don't forget that. You know, we have a bucket of money put in by a single taxpayer and limited things that we can spend it on. Um, primarily around economic development and so. Can you get more signs cheaper? Absolutely you can, but, but you're, what you're doing unfortunately here, and you're right, still. But you're comparing. Signs. To art and it's, there's not the same principle, it's just not the same thing. And so as a board, you need to decide, are we up for signs or do we want to add increase? Enhance the art that we've already invested. That's the decision. Can you get more signs? Well, sure you can. But you're comparing apples to oranges. But what we, the, we didn't, the money didn't bother us. Cause we saw it as an extension of a piece of art that was there and a piece of economic time. Which is our target. So you guys have a different target, I understand your point of view. And that's what we.
I would go with the. There hasn't, I would entertain a motion any possible way you'd like to make it.
I make a motion to. Approve the TIF committee's recommendation for the sign. In the amount of. In the amount of up to twenty-five hundred dollars.
I just wanna make sure this is paid at all. No more sign, no more.
Ron, thank you. Okay, so right, any further discussion on that?
Are we done with this mural, like it cost wise?
Couldn't even say that myself, I don't know, uh, I would not turn down any. Brilliant idea in any place, whether it's this sign or another public place, because it's. Long as it's not crazy art, uh, like some similar towns have done, I, I think I'm very much for it, uh. And we certainly have a lack of it, uh, it's just like the slightest little bit of something other than the norm, uh, and it's refreshing, it's nice.
I, I'm excited. I didn't know you'd be able to see it so well when you were coming down the road, so like. That was really cool and I've been like really proud and like I met my. Mother-in-law, sister-in-law for lunch and I was like, come see your sign and it's just like fun to show people, like a cute picture of my dog in front of it. Um, so I just think it's like, just kind of like something.
I completely agree. I just, I, I feel like this one. We just keep donating money to this one spot, like, could that go somewhere else? Like, could we have some, somewhere else, like?
Definitely that's there for certainly certain things that can be spent on and they're in that position to make those decisions to bring to the board. And if that's what they came up with.
And those, those are all people that put in applications that we agreed would make good decisions for you to get that money.
So, uh, there's a motion on second, uh, any further discussion on this? Yes, I will address the one more mural question and are we done putting money into murals? And I don't think.
That mural.
Okay, yes, I believe so.
Okay.
We've had conversations at previous meetings about.
Other places.
That might want murals on them, and I also know that our youngest member of our parks committee is just. Wouldn't it be beautiful to have one of those down in the park or down by the, um.
I am all for that, just not keeping it that one spot that we don't own the line on either side, like. Not at that, that one.
And maybe Todd, if you're listening, um, if there are people looking for more murals, if there's some place where there, you wanna put something here. There's a group, you all know, and feel strongly about mental health, there's a group at the high school called Your Mind Matters and they installed two murals. That they designed and painted in Scott Egan and they look really nice and they have like nice positive messages. So if there's ever a space, it's like, oh, I kinda wanna put something here, maybe tapping that one, I've seen them, what, what they're.
The twenty-five hundred channel or?
It's certainly never happened. Uh, so right, move to the second, any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor? The first would be a motion to accept donation from Joseph and real warrior in the amount of four hundred dollars for community access. Second motion on second, uh, any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, so everybody. Four in a second, any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, so everybody. Okay, discussion action on the disposal of X F firework. Okay, so compressor is uh isolating to what we're intended to discuss. Uh, what we tend to discuss is the entire X P D A system that we have received in ninety-five, it's great for. From the federal government, people, uh, and how we would like to dispose of it, that was how. This discussion started, that's where it was when we went on your agenda on Thursday. Uh, that's not where it is because. Uh, when digging into the archives, which they're a paper, I think in your, in your folder. Uh, we did not own that piece of equipment that we went to replace, which probably would have strengthened our position for the grave, right? C W Waste Services Incorporated owns that piece of equipment. And we just have a permanent lease with them with the condition that they have access to it for their reasons. Anyway, I brought an email off to Jeff at Waste Management, President. Today, and he pretty much responded back that. They're gonna give it to Smithfield under the same kind of arrangement that they have with us, so. Everything's a little bit cleaner now, the discussion about sales and things like that, but it's not, I'm so. I would recommend we terminate the lease agreement between the town and Norwich Walk and C W Waste Services. Allowing some disposal of the beside air compressor accepted in nineteen eighty-nine.
I thought it was. Something like that, but then we found the group.
No, good, that's perfect, excellent. Uh, and I couldn't ask for a better ending, that's really what I think everybody wanted. Uh, right, so, uh, go for the discussion, all in favor, that's everybody. Excellent. Uh, right, other business, uh, does the board have anything about the business? Richard, do you have anything about the business? You guys have anything from, okay, good, uh, keep moving forward and you have to go.